Fine.
All right, Conversations with Keith. I think we're down to our last two interviews. You're Mr. Clayber, you're one of the last two here.
Cool.
And we've went through a lot. My wife is thrilled to death when these things get done. Cause I can be home a little bit more.
I bet.
But Conversations Keith, even though it's been a monumental task, hopefully we've provided you all with some good information on candidates. The candidates have been able to speak to you all. It's hard to get to every single house.
Yeah.
And knock and talk. So maybe this is a way for those who weren't able to talk to a candidate, that you've been able to hear a little bit about them. David Clayber, wanted to ask you, just kind of tell them who you are.
Uh, my name's David Clayber. I've lived in Pendleton County in Falmouth pretty well all my life. Growing up and raised here, went to school here, graduated high school here. I've been in the fire service for over eighteen years. I made a career out of it. I recently moved out of the fire service to a safety consultant company, so.
Okay. And when did you graduate?
Nineteen ninety-six.
Nineteen ninety-six. So, so at that point in time, do you, what happened after that point in time? What'd you do?
Uh, pretty well been in the fire service.
Well, when you say that, what does that mean?
Uh, been a firefighter, M.T., a whole lot of technical rescue certifications. My job now, part of it is some confined space standbys for like a rescue team. So I've been a little bit of everywhere doing it, both in the public sector with, you know, different municipal fire departments, but also some private fire departments and private agencies doing that sort of thing.
And when you say confined space, well, explain that a little bit more.
Um, what it is, is anytime there is a permit required confined space, such as a manhole or something to that nature, and it's permit required, the contractor's required to have a rescue team on standby. And that's one of the things my company does. And I'm a confined space tech, a rope rescue tech, hazmat tech. So I've got a lot of knowledge in that kind of thing and we stand by.
So if they're working on a project, like last night I worked at US Bank Arena. And before the cycling game started, the city was working on one of the manhole areas that's on the street. And they had the whole street shut down. So there was somebody on standby. So if they're underground and something occurs, there's a group ready to show up.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Wow, that's, that sounds like the training to that. You better not be claustrophobic.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
Cause it just, I mean, I'm gonna imagine in the training to go underground.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
That would just be scary.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow.
And then having the pressure of, you know, somebody being injured or unconscious on top of that, and you have to hurry up and get them out, so.
And Lord forbid it would be a child. I mean, there'd be one sense of pressure of him being a person. But then if you're talking about a toddler and that kind of stuff, it just seems to ramp it up even more so.
Sure.
So you've got a lot of practical knowledge that you'd be bringing into the position about our emergency services and those kind of things.
Oh, definitely that. And I'm really getting into the OSHA side of everything now. I'm getting all my OSHA certifications. I've had a lot of background in the private sector with doing safety audits and things of that nature for OSHA compliance. And now I'm really diving into that more in my new position. So I'll be able to bring that to the table also.
Well, when you say OSHA audit, what is the benefit to having those, to passing those to, to a city?
Well, especially for the city side, you know, our city has had many OSHA violations in the past. And they're fineable, they're fineables. And, you know, depending on how, how bad of a issue it is, it can be thousands and thousands of dollars per day that we are fined. So.
Do you know what some of the violations have been in the past?
Um, I know, I think the maintenance crews had some issues with some of their electrical stuff in the past. I'm not sure what the other ones were.
Has it been recent or?
Um, it's probably five, ten years ago maybe.
Okay. Okay. So, you know, making sure you're OSHA, and that's a federal program? And so these are federal guidelines that you have to abide by?
Correct.
Yeah. And I, I think most people probably, if you're out in the maintenance world or the construction world, or even in my area, when I was hanging up athletic and stuff, you would have the joke, I'm sure this is an OSHA crew.
Exactly. And that's one of the things I do with my new job, is I go around to different sites and make sure that contractors are doing what they're supposed to be doing, you know? And making sure that, you know, if OSHA comes into that job site, that they are okay and they're not gonna get fined for anything.
And the important stat is safety of the worker.
Well, sure. We want everybody to go home at night.
Absolutely. Because businesses are notorious about wanting, they, they want to, businesses are very, try to be very efficient in their financial resources to make the most money they can.
Right.
And that may not always be the best safety features, but they want their workers to do it. With OSHA, it's all about the safety of the workers.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Cause unfortunately, you seem like every summer, you see somewhere that there's a ditch that has collapsed on a worker somewhere. And those are the kinds of things they're trying to prove.
Yep.
Yeah. All right. Well, beyond that, beyond that, anything else going on?
Um, no. Another thing that I'd like people to know that, you know, back in my younger days, when I was right out of high school, I also did work for city maintenance crew for a couple of years. So, you know, I've seen the sewer lines, the water lines. And, you know, I know the inner workings of the maintenance side of it and, and the shape that it's in as far as our infrastructure. So I know how it was twenty years ago. So it's definitely not any better now.
Yeah. Now, you said you lived in city Falmouth your entire life?
Uh, between the city and Pendleton County, majority of it. I had, I moved to Alexandria for a couple of years, but didn't really care for it, moved right back, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I think you have a recent development that you may wanna, you know, talk about?
Yeah, I did. Just got married to Kelly Moore, Satan. We got married last weekend, so.
And Kelly, of course, is the Family and Resource Youth Services Council Committee? Center, center. I knew it was a C word. That works at Southern in the high school. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, we'll go ahead and get started. You mentioned about utilities, great segue. Um, I've, I've made the comment several times. It seems anymore, the only thing that city council is dealing with is utilities.
Is utilities.
What is the importance of city council spending so much time on utilities? Or is there an importance?
Well, I definitely think it's an important issue. One of the things with it is, you know, there's been a lot of talk, is it making money or not? And, you know, like the garbage, for instance, I'm not really gonna dive into that. That's a done, a done thing. Okay, well, um, but yeah, are they making enough money? But are they making enough money to support the infrastructure repair? And if you look at the past, you know, probably not, because that's why our infrastructure's in such bad shape now. So, I mean, it's really important that we look at these things. And we may be forced to make some really tough decisions on if they are making enough money, do, you know, what's our options? Whether sell it out or keep raising rates, you know, what's, what's gonna be fair for our citizens? And, you know, I think that's something that we, we do have to put time into. You know, I hate seeing that all the council meetings here lately seem to just revolve around that and not be touching on all the other issues in the city. But it is very important.
Do, do you think the, the, the only issue is whether it makes money or not? Or are there one of the four utilities that you keep, unless obviously, you know, it's just costing you millions?
Right.
Are there, are there ones that you keep that it's kind of irrelevant whether you make money or not?
Not really, because, you know, a lot of cities aren't in the utility game. You know, we're not utility people. We're not trained to, you know, to manage utility, you know, like a utility company type thing. So I like the water and sewer, that we kind of cut out the middleman with that. However.
Actually, you are kind of the middleman.
Yeah.
Because you should, yeah, you make water for East Pendleton and Pendleton County, our district.
You know, something like that, yeah, that would be an important one to look at. And if we're gonna put money into our infrastructure, let's focus on that, because we're making money, you know, from the, the water fill, from selling it to the other, other people. And we're, we're cutting out the middleman, cause we're the ones making it. So I think, you know, even if we had to have some raises in it, it, it will still benefit the city in the long run, because it is a moneymaker. And same way with the sewage, because, you know, we're cutting out the middleman there. We're doing it ourselves. And we also, you know, have rumpkey and people that we charge to dump. So, you know, I don't know exactly what the loan is that's coming up, what it's, what it's exactly gonna go for. But, you know, if it gets our, our sewer numbers back in line and we can really start letting rumpkey ramp back up and, and dump a lot of things, make some money, you know, I think that's a great thing.
From my understanding, the, the state has come in and issued orders that the retention, pond, basin, whatever the term is, has to be done.
Yes. I believe we also have a agreed order with, to fix the tower, the Shoals Tower also.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's definitely a priority, you know? We, we can only tell, we're working on it for so long. You know, we eventually have to take action and say, okay, now we're doing it.
Yeah.
So, and that time has come, because they're gonna get tired of us saying, hey, you know, we're working on it. Well, you've been telling us that for years.
Well, and they're, and they did work on one tire. One tire was addressed and, and handled and those kind of things, maybe two years ago.
Right.
Maybe eighteen months, something along those lines. But yeah, you're right. You're gonna, I mean, if, if you don't, then the state going back to OSHA fineing, you just.
Right, right. And they can fine us per day, per fraction, just like OSHA was.
And then you're still gonna have to do the work.
And we still have to do the work. Yeah. So now we're out of those fines and we still have to do the work.
Yeah.
You know, we can't afford that. So, you know, we have to make sure that if we enter into that agreed order, that we're gonna follow it and do our part to make sure it gets done.
Okay.
And that's also important for our citizens.
Gotcha. What about electric? Should you be in the electric business?
Electric? I don't know. I would have to look at the numbers.
Okay.
Again, you know, we're not really utility people. In, in the past, has it made money? I don't know. Does it make enough to continue doing it? Is, you know, what is our infrastructure status as far as that goes, you know? Cause one thing with the utilities is we can't grow as a city until our infrastructure is repaired and in good shape. To support what we currently have, we have to make sure we're taking care of ourselves before we can add. So if our electric grid can't handle, you know, adding on a big business or something like that, we're kind of dead in the water.
Yeah.
So I think that's something we really need to look at.
Okay. All right. Well, let's get back to trash. That, that of course was decided and they, they purchased a truck.
Yes.
In the mayor race, there has been some comments about maybe it would be, depending upon who's elected, maybe that issue would be revisited at some point in time.
Okay.
Sebastian Ernst even shared an article that the city of Mayville, this week, what looked like in the Ledger Independent Story, they approved the contract with Rumpkey, which is the exact same contract. In a lot of facets that was reported on the Ledger, there may have been some differences in the contract that the Ledger didn't report on.
Right.
Stance on, on a good decision, bad decision? Where did you fall on privatizing trash?
Well, one of the big issues I have with the trash is nobody could seem to come up with the right numbers, you know? I've heard, you know, if we run it this way, we're making money. If we run the numbers this way, we're not making money. There should only be one way to run the numbers, you know? It should be pretty simple as if we're making money or not. I mean, you have to include the cost of employees, the maintenance, workers comp, the health insurance, all of that. If it wasn't making money, by all means, get rid of it. You know, a lot of people say customer service. I don't know what customer service they have with their garbage men, but all I know is when I put my garbage out in the morning and I come home Tuesday afternoon, it's gone. It doesn't matter to me who picks it up. And if we can get a better deal and a cheaper rate with Rumpkey and utilize those garbage employees elsewhere where we have shortfalls, that's by far, to me, the way to go, because that's less insurance and, and everything like that. Maintenance on the truck, the truck period, the CDL issue that they seem to always have, it takes that away.
One of the, the things that cracked me up that was an argument for keeping trash, well, there's people who forget to pay, put their trash out, then we go back and pick them up. That's their irresponsibility. Why are you assuming more costs because people are irresponsible?
Another, and another thing I heard with that whole ordeal is people was like, well, I want everything on one bill. Well, I've talked to a lot of people that don't want everything on one bill, because, you know, in the summertime, for example, mine was running like four hundred and fifty dollars a month. You only have fifteen days to pay that. People that are hard up for money, that's a lot of money for them to come up at one time. They would rather have it broke down throughout the month, the smaller payments. And, you know, with, for example, like Duke Energy or somebody, they'll give you a longer grace period than that fifteen days to pay that, to where it would make it a lot easier for, for low income families to, to make it by.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, you're exactly right. If you have the, the trash come out one week.
Right.
The water and sewage the next week, the electric the other week, then you can budget better, especially if you're getting paid on a weekly basis.
Or even biweekly, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And another thing is if they didn't have enough money to pay their water, they're not getting everything shut off.
Gotcha.
They're not losing everything, just because they didn't have enough to pay that, this one portion of their bill.
Yeah.
So, and that's another thing to look at.
Yeah. That's a very, very good point. I don't think anybody had mentioned about how the, you know, if you're talking about people on fixed income, if you're talking about people on low income, that it might be a budget case. Now, my guess is that most people on fixed income or low income are getting month, for example, my pension retirement check comes in once a month.
Right.
Which is Monday. Monday's a good day. Monday's a happy day in this fifth hour. But yeah, I mean, they're probably, but, but it would help out in that regard.
And you know, I've heard the statistics before and, and I'm not quoting it, I'm exactly right. But I've heard that our area's in the area of like sixty-eight percent poverty level. You know, so that's pretty high.
Well, your wife would know that.
Yeah.
Cause that, that's the, that's the clientele.
She said that's, that's around, around what it is. I don't think maybe the exact number, but that's really high. So any way we can help these, these people, I'm, I'm game to help them.
Absolutely. Well, let's talk about helping them. It's a good, you, man, you're giving some good segues here. Best way to help is provide jobs.
Well, sure.
What do we, the, the number one producer of jobs in the state of Kentucky, and if people have been watching these, they already have the answer, cause I've probably said this a dozen times in these interviews, is small businesses in the state of Kentucky. What does Falmouth need to do? What does Falmouth City Council need to do to foster an environment? People are wanting to take their money and invest into a small business?
You know, like I said, I think one of the first things before we can do that is make sure our infrastructure can support it. Because if we, if we sell the, the whole idea of, you know, this is a great place to start a factory or start, you know, even a medium sized business, if our, if we, if they build it and we can't support them with electric and with sewage, because our plants are not big enough, then we've got an issue. So we obviously have to get that taken care of first. I think we need to get out there and, and sell our, our community more. Especially at like the Travel Sports and Boat Show. I've seen Pendleton County set up there before, you know, places like that. The Chamber of Commerce, you know, we really have to try to sell ourselves. We have a lot of great things. We have Kincaid Lake State Park, we have Thaxons Canoeing. You know, we have a lot of stuff around here that we can, we can really use to sell ourselves. The Wool Fest.
Yeah. Has Falmouth ever had a booth at the Wool Fest to talk about the things that are going on throughout the year?
Not that I can ever remember now.
Okay.
So, I mean, those are things that we can really capitalize on in selling ourselves to these businesses.
Yeah.
The Clay Farm, I think that's a very important piece of land that we don't need to be selling.
Actually, I just wrote that down, cause I was gonna ask you, what should be done with the clay property?
Well, one of the things I thought about that I'd like to at least look into is, if you recall, a couple of months ago, they were talking about some of the different things in the council meetings, they were talking about flood insurance rates. What are we paying total in the city for flood insurance? And would that justify the amount? It almost sounded to me, the amount that we're paying for flood insurance, we could be building something out of the, the flood zone. You know, basically like a, a city of Falmouth complex that held the fire department, the police department, city hall, even the maintenance. Get us, get that out of the flood zone. We could pretty well probably pay for that with what we're paying for flood insurance. So that's, that's something I would at least like to research. And there's also grants available that'll pay portions of that. For instance, the fire department can apply through FEMA and get probably a portion of that paid through the FEMA grant. So there's different areas of that that you can look at, but that would be a great start for small businesses.
Now, you hear a lot of people say, build downtown, rebuild downtown, rebuild town. If, if you're talking about building a facility out on the clay property and it makes financial sense.
Yes.
But aren't you also taking what's some of the things that are left in downtown, out of downtown?
You are. But we also have to remember that with businesses, they're gonna wanna be out on the main drag, you know, for transportation issues and things like that. They wanna be close to, gotta be out of the flood zone.
Yeah.
The flood zone is a huge issue around here. For instance, our house during the ninety-seven flood.
And where do you live?
Uh, three ten Maple.
Three ten Maple, okay.
Corner of Maple and Port Street.
Okay.
The house was paid for when the ninety-seven flood hit. Kelly's grandparents had to take a, almost a hundred thousand dollar loan out to fix the house. On a thirty-year FEMA loan. We had it appraised last year and it only appraises for fifty-four thousand dollars, because we live in the flood zone.
Wow.
So the flood zone's really killing us. It really is. And that's why we have such a high percentage of rentals here. Guys can buy those houses cheap, not have to put flood insurance on them, cause they bought them outright, rent them and back their money, which is, which is fine. I mean, but, you know, we have to really concentrate on, out of the flood zone for businesses. Because they're not gonna wanna spend all that money to fix up something and then have to pay a ton of money on flood insurance. I think it's great what Councilman Ursus is doing downtown and I love seeing it. I hate seeing that he's had so much trouble out of the, all the building codes and, and things, which is making it really hard, which would make it hard for anybody to put downtown. I mean, I love seeing downtown grow, but as far as new businesses, they're gonna wanna be out on the highway and away from the flood zone.
Yeah. Well, AutoZone coming in, did you see where they chose to go and, and different places like that? And, and you know, and as you look at some of those things that, that he's going through, some of that is state requirements that we know are not gonna change.
Yeah. Most of it is.
Yeah. And so any business looking to come downtown is going to look at that same thing, cause the chances state making their changes for downtown Falmouth, probably not.
Well, it, you know, and between the flood insurance and all the red tape, it would probably be easier for them to build new, rather than try to fix up one of our old buildings, which is a shame. It's a, it's a shame. But unfortunately, dealing with the state and federal levels, our hands are tied with that.
So clay property, you're talking about the Falm, the city of Falmouth actually using it to lower some of their expenses?
You can. Plus, you still have plenty of land to hopefully develop around it.
Do you want that development to be retail that brings in businesses? Do you want it to be residential, which creates tax revenue for you all? Do you want it to, excuse me, to be industrial?
It could be a mixture of all. I mean, maybe not so much the industrial. The industrial I kind of see as an issue, because I don't know if it's just because we haven't been selling our county, but our county's actually done a really good job in promoting our county. But look at the industrial park outside of town. I mean, it's sat there for years. So I think we really shouldn't put too many eggs in the industrial basket, but maybe more retail. A good example is Walton. I was on the fire department over there for four years, almost five. And we built a new station in their town, in the new complex that they built right there by the interstate.
Where Kroger is.
Yeah, where Kroger and all that. They were one of the first buildings back there. Something like that would be great, even if it's a small strip mall. And then you could still have the back parts of the, the farm as residential.
Gotcha. How, how many acres are back there? Do you know approximately?
It's at least a couple hundred, I think.
Oh, really? It's that big? Wow.
I think it's pretty decent size.
Wow.
So there's plenty of room there for you. So I, I don't wanna see the city get rid of it, cause I think there's a lot of potential there. And I think if we get rid of it, we'll be kicking ourselves in the butt for it.
Yeah. And, and I guess if you get rid of it to somebody, it's for express purpose of a strip center or building houses. Houses are being built, but not just to sell a piece of land to somebody who wants to buy a piece of land with their development lands. Okay. What about incentives? You talked about having to get the foundations and those kind of things. Are there any incentives that you, as a city council, you would be open to pursue?
I would be open into looking into it, because I think that's, you know, working in the Walton area, I saw a lot of that with the big companies and the industrial centers, you know, that, that's what really drew them is, is the different tax incentives and tax decreases. I don't know if we've ever done that before for any businesses, but it's definitely worth looking into. Yeah, we'll take a hit for a while, but it'll definitely be worth it in the long run, you know? So if we give them a twenty-year freeze on their taxes where they don't have to pay anything to us, after that twenty years, it's, it should pay off for us in the long run and be good for us. Not only for us, but for the county, because of the, the tangible taxes and property taxes and all that. So, you know, even if we keep from, you know, say twenty years from getting taxes, in that long run, it's gonna benefit everybody.
Okay. All right. One of the other issues that comes up a lot, actually, before we go on to this other issue, what do you see as the role of city council compared to the role of mayor? What, what are the realms that city council kind of directs? What are the realms the mayor that they can't get into each other's area of, of supervision?
I think especially with the years past, the council members, some of them have kind of stepped, overstepped their boundaries. The mayor's job is to run the city from day-to-day operations. If you're out and about and you see a city employee doing something wrong or something, you shouldn't approach them. You should contact the mayor, let the mayor handle it. That's what he's here day-to-day for, you know? Our role as a council is to make the best decisions for this, this city. And we have the mayor to enforce that.
Okay. Do you know what areas that, or do you, not, no, that's not the one I wanna ask. What areas do you see that the city council, when, when they're making their legislative decisions, what areas do they, well, I guess where the separation of a day-to-day activity is, that it then becomes a city council issue?
Well, you know, like when city council is meeting, the mayor's job is to run the meeting, obviously. The city council will talk about whatever's on the agenda, you know, put things on the agenda that they wanna talk about, you know, make all the decisions for the city. And then again, it's the mayor's job to make sure that those are getting enforced and things are being done throughout day-to-day operations that need to be done.
Okay. Why run? What, what was the thing, the, the proverbial last straw on the camel's back that said, I need to do this?
It's something I've wanted to do for many years. And I just felt like I wasn't in the right place to do it. And now I think I'm in the right place for doing it. A lot of people tell me I'm crazy, that this is a horrible time to be getting into it, but.
Well, we joked with Joyce Carson, she took over in July for Alex, where they threw her right in the fire.
Yeah, I felt sorry for her. You know, after I interviewed for that and I started seeing those, I'm like, I dodged a bullet there. Poor Joyce, poor Joyce.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, it's a tough time and there's gonna be some tough decisions to be made. But, you know, I'm willing to look at the issues and I wanna see all sides of it. I may see this issue one way and Joyce may see it another way. I'm not so hard-headed that, I want her to explain her way, so, you know, we can see all sides of this issue, so we can make the right decision. You know, so I think it's time to, you know, try it out, see how I can help.
Okay. All right. The other issue that comes up a lot, that it's pretty easy to anticipate that at every local, local and state level, and even federal even more, that there's gonna be a question about is the drug issue.
Yes, that is a huge issue around here.
What does, what does city coun, what is city council able to do about it?
We really need to be able to support our police department. And I think in years past, they haven't been supported like they should. They weren't given the tools to do their jobs. I think the, the present council, the present mayor have done a lot better with that. We have a good chief now, Shannon. He's a great chief. He's very knowledgeable. He's been in the service for years. We have to continue to support them and give them everything they need to do their job, so we can start fixing these crime issues. Whether it's, you know, researching what other cities have done that's helped, to sending them to training, to whatever we need to do to combat this issue. Because not only the drugs, when you have the drug issue, you also get into the crime issues, because they're gonna steal and do whatever they can to get the money to do their drugs. So it's not just a drug problem. It's, you know, it turns into a, a bigger, bigger mess, you know, with. the other crimes because of the drug issue, so.
What about salaries? It, it seems like retention has been a, a big issue, um, in the city. Um, and even the sheriff's department the same route. Um, so, you know, wha- what has to be the commitment from council to, to address that? To get and keep, um, you know, police officers for a while?
Well, sure, and it's not just police officers, it's, uh, the maintenance workers, the utility workers, it's everybody. I think a, a, a good payroll scale that, you know, after you've been here so long, you get performance reviews and, you know, if you do good on your performance reviews, you know, there's a progressive step to a top out. Um, and I've always said, you, you get what you pay for, and if you don't pay anybody anything, you're not gonna get much.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have the high turnout for rate. So, we have to look at ways to take care of our employees better, uh, better insurance.
And that's a key, that's a key thing anymore, just.
Yes, it's a huge issue.
Yeah.
If we can help them out with their insurance to where they don't have to pay as much, you know, their single plans, I don't believe are too bad, but I've had um, some city employees tell me that when they try to put their family on, it's just outrageous and they can't afford it. And that's a lot of things that people look at when they go to work for the city, you know, they know this stuff, they've talked to the people that've worked here before. You get what you pay for and we have to come up with a way to make sure we're taking care of our employees because the more you take care of them, the more they're gonna wanna stay, the more they're gonna wanna do for you. So.
Any other issues that you see that, that maybe I've not mentioned here that, that, that the city needs to be focusing on?
Yeah, I think, uh, they, they hit on it months and months ago and it was kind of a, a hot topic and then it dropped off was the renter issues. Um, I recently saw something on Facebook that a friend of mine shared. And it was an issue with a house down on Liberty Street that was basically abandoned and trashed. It almost looked like a hoarder house, you know, and then now it's just sitting there vacant. And it's drawing rats and, and things to the, the houses around it. You know, we have to have some type of, some type of way to combat this. And if we're gonna have, you know, I understand we have a lot of rental properties, which is fine. But we have to make sure that, that everything's staying in a good standard. And, you know, we wanna draw citizens in, not run them out. And we can't have these houses like that around, we have to make the, the owners accountable for their renters.
Gotcha, gotcha. Any, any other issues?
Uh, no.
Okay, well, we've kinda finished all these by, by letting you give a, a look back, uh, in essence. Jumping to the fut- future while looking back, uh, you're elected, you would start in January of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, your term would end in December of twenty twenty-one. At that point in time in twenty twenty-one, as you look back, what would you hope that a, a voter would look at and say, this is what I noticed about his term on city council?
Well, I would hope to see that I was a voice for the citizens. You know, that's why we're in there, you know, we're in there as a representative of the citizens. So, when they look back at my term, I would hope they, you know, he listened to the citizens, he asked for input from the citizens. He looked at all the, the, uh, issues and gave them time and researched them and made the best informed decisions. I'm hoping they say he, you know, that council really fixed our utility issue, that got us headed in the right direction. You know, there's nothing but good things to come, so. It's wishful thinking probably, but you know, that's what I'd like to see.
You know, I asked this question yesterday or the day before. Wha- what's the balance between listening to residents and making the best informed decision? The analogy I give was back in the fifties, the cutoff wanted Jim Crow laws. That wasn't the best decision. And so, you know, some sort of politician at some point in time had the guts enough to stand up and say, we're not gonna do what the residents and the people who elected me want me to do. What, what, how do you balance that?
I think a bigger the issue in, in a small city like Falmouth is, a rumor gets started, everybody jumps on the bandwagon and agrees with it. You have to make sure that everybody, you know, when you're talking to them and asking them, you know, their input on this, you have to make sure that they're well informed of the issue and not just a general overview, so. It's tough, but I mean, sometimes the decisions are black and white, you know? Are we making money? Are we making enough money? Are we, are we losing our butts on it? Is this gonna benefit our city as a whole? Is it gonna benefit us in the future? You know, those are the things that I'm gonna look at. And again, it may not be a popular decision that I have to make, you know, especially with all the utility issues. But I'm willing to make that difficult decision if it's gonna, um, take the city in the right direction in the future.
Okay, alright, well, hey, thank you for coming out here on Saturday morning on this, on this kind of nasty little. Truly a fall to Kentucky day, that's for sure.
Definitely.
And as always, thank you all for listening in, city, city of Falmouth residents, hopefully you're all getting these information. Um, as I've said in other videos, we've not been able to work out on time for everybody. Some people's work schedules just won't allow it to occur. Uh, but we're, we tried to get as many as possible that we could and as many people who replied to us to set up as a time. So hopefully it helps you out, make sure you're getting out on November sixth. Make sure on all of our videos, you're going to FalmouthOutlook dot com to watch them, don't go to YouTube to watch them, FalmouthOutlook dot com. For those who have multiple parts, that's where you'll find both parts. If you're just going to YouTube, you may not know that there's a part one and a part two. So thank you all for, um, uh, joining us and as always, I hate on Saturday morning, you have to watch me get up and walk to the camera to turn it off.